For the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remember a couple of membership tonight? Maybe some water over seal or earth? Just a guess. But anyway, we do have form, so we can proceed. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Well, um, yeah, right. We have under item five, speaking of changes to the agenda, under item five, we have superintendent evaluation, would be in executive session. And I would suggest that we move that down to between item 11 as well, after board member reports. If anybody would like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make the motion, we move item five to twelve, is that?
To after eleven.
To after eleven?
A second. Been moved in second to move, um, five A down to after item eleven. Is there any discussion there?
Does it make any sense to postpone it while we have the full board?
Well, Bob probably won't be here anywhere. Right? We're excluding Amy, who can be the only one. Okay. It's an informal evaluation. Right?
No, no, I'm just kind of referencing.
Yeah, but we just had it in the way, but... And by the way, you know, you asked a question the last time regarding including Nick in the rest session. And I checked our policy and I checked state law and go over silently. And so I went to Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order says that the executive sessions includes obviously board members. Any employees or staff that are required and special invitees. So it is possible for us to include Nick in that session. I've done that right up before. You must pull on that. Thank you. So we have a motion on the table, is there any further discussion there? I'm, I would, I say we move forward with it. My money. It's an informal evaluation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, um, see, item four, consent agenda. I move the board group's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? All right, um, item six, public comment. Anyone want to sign up? Concerned? Okay, item seven, um, doc policy, I don't know, seven A is doc policy two zero three zero.
I move the board to doc policies two zero three zero, six one oh one, six one one four, and six one one five.
A second. It's been moved in second to doc policies two zero three zero, six one zero one, six one one four, and six one one five. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries? New business, approved purchase of seventy eighth passenger Thomas bus not to exceed one hundred thirty nine thousand dollars in tax. Remove the board approved purchase of seventy eighth passenger Thomas bus not to exceed one hundred thirty nine thousand with tax. So you're second?
Oh, second, sorry.
It's been moved in second to approve the purchase of a seventy eighth passenger Thomas bus not to exceed one hundred thirty nine thousand dollars with tax. Is there any discussion?
I just brought the spec sheet in.
Yeah, I mean, these, these are states negotiated.
State ways and then those options that I did include in correspondence.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries? Uh, item eighteen, approve out of area teaching assignment for Rebecca Cudner.
I move the board approved and out of area teaching assignment for Rebecca Cudner.
It's been moved in second to approve out of area teaching assignment for Rebecca Cudner. Is there any discussion? Okay.
Because she, her teaching endorsement is fifth grade and middle level science. She did art as a profession before she became a teacher, but she has no teaching endorsement or teaching credential in that subject. I would qualify gods, say that's, that's not okay unless you have a board approval and a claim. So, you have to have that.
At some point, does that affect funding if we don't know?
Well, um, either she has to obtain a credential or eventually or not do it less.
There you find.
Um, you know, you can keep reviewing it, so we'll probably, you know, until it's sort of, she picks up the credentials. She has enough on the job time to go through a vocational route, but she doesn't know if she's interested in pursuing that. So, um, we brought our kids in the library, but they have a path, we don't talk to her about what way to do that. You can keep reviewing it, especially in areas where it's difficult to hire people that have those endorsements. Like for here, where we don't have art full time, so the odds of us hiring a full time art teacher are pretty much nil. So, I think you can add up in three years if you continue to review your, listen to your request.
So, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries? H C accept donation of sixteen hundred dollars from outreach ministries for music program and student's needs. Who would the board accept the donation of sixteen hundred dollars from outreach ministries for the music program and students' needs? A second. It's been moved in second to accept the donation of sixteen hundred dollars from outreach ministries for music program and student's needs. Is there any discussion?
I will just add that if they print that wrong, it's Reach Out Ministries actually. And it is the thrift shop at Long Beach, and their primary functions are schools and Christian programs. And actually, we have a grandson of this lady who's the head of this in our school. They gave it to all Pacific, well, I should say Peninsula and Naysa schools this year.
And this is essentially, this is a grant?
Well, it is a grant, but we wanted to go to those programs, so we didn't apply. We didn't apply for this, they just said, hey, we'd like to give this to you. We said, okay, let's check it out.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries? Yeah, I think we got it typed over here, the next one should be D, I believe.
I'm afraid of letter D, so...
Okay. Policy two zero two nine, animals in school, those three?
This, we have this policy already. Wassa just put an update on this policy, and we follow some deals of the ones we just approved regarding service animals. So they want to clarify that there's service animals and then there's animals in schools, which are different. This is the one where kids sometimes bring pets for show and tell. Last year, we had a science fair, and we all brought our snake collection. So, the key there is, third sentence down, help issues out against vaccinated status. So all of you can address before you bring any animals. We have this already, but it doesn't include, but this is on the help and out of the business.
This is first read?
First read. Just an awareness, it's the shortest policy we have.
Item nine A, council report.
Well, we have it ready to be set up for a technology demo that we're doing on coding. And I'm going to have to explain that, it's a type of computer program where the kids are doing nowadays in schools. He has more issues also, so I don't know if Alan was anything he wanted to add.
Yeah, I'm just real quick with it. The Assistant Secretary of DSAHS, John Clayton, was at camp two weeks ago, my name. And was able to show him around and show him kind of what we do there. I think I'm pretty impressed, I was able to have one student explain how he was earning extra credit in a program called Education Portal, an online, well, maybe you've seen a little pop-up, study.com. Anyway, we have thirty-six free seats that we get for the institution where we can have to earn online credit. There was a certificate of teacher in the classroom, but they have a wide range of subjects that they can take classes on. So, anyway, we had a student that was able to explain how he earned a whole lot of credit of algebra between the end of August and about three weeks ago. That's a whole year's worth of work, he had two hundred forty-two lessons, I think. I mean, it was a lot of work, this is a smart kid, he was doing it more than one period because he has that access to that program for more than one period. But it was good for, um, Mr. Clayton to have a chance to see firsthand how the kids, see how it really affects you, you know, it's a good opportunity. And then beyond that, we have teachers that are just really accommodating of kids who want our extra credit. A lot of the kids, they get incarcerated and they have this wake-up call, they're like, gosh, I'm eighteen, I've got no credits, you know? I'm never going to graduate, and I got time, you know? So all of a sudden, they get motivated to turn it on on their education. So they're in school for a regular school program, but they also have an opportunity to work in the lodge. They can take a, you know, Mr. Smith, for instance, might put together CWP contract for that unit that would make it earn a half a credit in CWP if they read half the book, if they go ahead in the classroom and do the associated work with it. So there's, there's opportunities, and the kids take advantage of it. I bet I've got forty-five kids on independent contracts right now. Some of those are the same kid that's on the contract, but then a lot of outside work nobody's making them do. They're doing this because they want to try and catch up or graduate, whatever their goal is. So it's pretty, pretty impressive. And, but that's neat. And then other than that, I think from the finance part of it, we're in a whole different situation this year. Last year, if you remember, we had, we were funded at seventy-six kids and we were only getting like sixty-eight, seventy. And so we ended up in this squabble at the end of the year where, you know, you said, we were going to have seventy-six kids and you only gave us seventy-two. Now we're going to pony up the money. And so now we're just the opposite, you know, they, they did, and I think it was smart, fund us at seventy, and they wanted to make sure whatever they said that actually goes. Well, now it was eighty-five, I can't remember now. So you can imagine, I staffed for seventy, and now I'm going to be by kids. So we're busting at the seams, and at some point, I've got a few alternative measures we could take. If I had a zero period, I could probably do that with my existing staff and have somebody teach a period, maybe before school starts. And pull a kid out of a class that's already full later in the day. There's, I've just got a few alternative plans. We're close, but it won't get worse than this. I've been talking to administration about this because it's a, across time, where it's really tricky for me to schedule everybody. I mean, you know, I don't have any margin for error. I have a great number of classes that are totally full. They got twelve kids and they can't go beyond that according to the contract, and you shouldn't anyway. But they're just full. But, um, you know, we're, at least we're not in a situation we're going to squabble with yet. I mean, I'm sure, you know, we're going to have...
I'm starting to kind of enjoy that myself.
It's just the scheduling challenge, you know, it's just crazy.
And you're back to doing evening classes too, right? You're back to doing the evening classes?
Yeah, we have three classes in the evening, since sometimes I've got to jump in there and cover, somebody's gone, or everybody had during his tech time, good for short on Sunday on top of everything. But, you know, it is a good chance to do. But yeah, classes are going well, teachers are doing great, kids are, you know, really practicing, working real hard in class. Especially the educational department, we're moving twelve kids in each of those who really want our extra credit. It's part of it, but it's just a scheduling challenge without, I mean, kids, we're only staffed for seventy. We are dropping the two crews on DNR, that's one other thing I thought I would mention. I don't feel it's all bad, I know there's like a lot of speculation, oh, that's really bad. But, you know, we've had three crews and they haven't been going out consistently, and we haven't always been staffed fully. So by dropping the two crew, Mr. Colombo, who's the DNR supervisor at camp now, is, he wants to have two crews that go out every day rather than three crews, and, you know, it might not be that consistent. He wants two crew, twenty kids going out every day, and then a backup of kids that can sub in. So basically, like, that's the varsity team, and then he's going to have a duty that he subs in, so the kids can go and get time out in the field. Because what's been happening is the kids might have a DNR schedule, but if they don't go out, they don't earn occupational ed credit. And that's been a, a issue for me as the principal. I don't mind having them in night school if they're actually on DNR and they're giving time in the woods. If they earn occupational ed credit, you have to do that to graduate. And then I have Mr. Rudolph going out in the field once a week with them, so they actually earn school credit for that as well, like, as a class. But that's four classes plus occupational ed time. So it's all fine as long as they're actually going out. But it's a short change to kids if they don't go out. So I think it's positive. And then if they can consistently have two crew, then they'll look at maybe going back to three crew. So I don't, if you hear about it, I can see the little negative myself. I'd rather see two crew going out every day than have three on paper, but it's not really happening. So that's kind of what's going on, you know?
I'm going to just tell the audience and the board, if you ever want to go get some cookies and juice or water, I'm just going to have that a little bit later for Bob, but I'm not sure you should on that, so help yourself. Everyone please. Okay, um, this was kind of going to be technology demo night. I'd like to show you a little clip from, or a 3D printer, what we're able to do with that. You know, we can't hear that.
Good evening. I was asked a few days ago if I could introduce you to the new piece of equipment we have in our computer lab. This is our Mojo 3D printer. And 3D printing is really revolutionizing the learning world. What used to take, you know, months to develop prototypes after engineers have engineered things, now it can be a tangible piece within hours. And it has just advanced so many areas, especially like medicine and other engineering fields. For us, we are starting to use this with my three-dimensional design, and I'm going to take a few minutes to just show how the students are using it right now. Currently, some of my advanced students are using precision measuring instruments to try to replicate existing objects. However, I'd like them to try to create things that have to fit together and show a little bit higher level of engineering. This group is trying to create a chessboard that's going to snap together. Those that are just learning to design with the three-dimensional tools are using it to print their products. Another thing the students wanted to try was to do some 3D scanning, but I think the scanner costs about fifteen thousand dollars. However, with the wonders of the internet, we were going to take an Xbox camera and produce some free software and get some pretty good results. Once the file is created, we send it to the computer and into the printing software. At this point, we scale the drawing, orient it how we want to print, and then send it to the printer. At that point, the software calculates how many layers of material it will take to create the part. Then, the printer just starts putting down layer after layer after layer of material to create the object. Here's a finished project coming out of the printer. If you notice, there's support material that's also on it that helps support any blank areas that might be on the object. Once we remove it from the printer, then we put it in a bath to clean off the support material. This is kind of an oxy-teen type of material that rinses it away. Then, a couple hours later, we have our finished product.
Then the power went out, so for the rest of the story, I will go ahead and, I know, we can get the whole thing. Anyway, but just a couple of things, so you see the regular chess piece, and then, I'll send these down. Then the kids create that. So, we, my stepson is a machinist, and people will bring them prototypes. We have this big CNC machine, and they say, okay, we want these, and so we make a model. And we were doing this with a six thousand dollar, it's expensive, but printer. So, in all due need of tools some days, and this probably isn't going to be super strong, but, I mean, fully functional, present, made from a printer, gears, there's a...
Interesting.
Something.
I like the French feeling.
This was the face of the kid you saw with the Xbox, and it was starting to print. So it didn't get, sure, the power died, but this was an earlier attempt, painting. You have to see this logo thing, I mean, it's amazing. But the most amazing thing to me is this. This is, it's like a dental floss. So you picture like a caulking gun, or you're running a bee back and forth. So that's what it is, it's just a strip of basic dental floss, just, you know, back and forth, laying it down, building. And when you get these, you can see the grooves.
And what plan do you keep that in?
Um, I don't know if you call that a class. I wouldn't know. It's not for education technology, it's, it's like a shop class.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Technology, do you know, Taylor?
I have no idea.
Technology design, basically. So they could bring in something, say, okay, we want this whatever, and it's a fully functional tool, made out of floss. I guess, I don't know, for lack of a better term.
The name printer is totally inadequate to describe that kind of stuff.
Right. But basically, you know, you're just creating it up and it's...
So the product itself is...
It's... Well, I mean, it's like a plastic...
But Alan was saying, can you see it?
Yeah, there's, there's...
There's different...
I don't know, this one can, but the 3D printer, you can, depends on the cartridge, it's like, you can purchase it. So there's, whatever the content is, it can have that.
So, yeah, you have little wires like that.
Right.
Yeah, so there's a catalyst that makes it hard and then...
I mean, there's, we always experience objects, you can make old cars and then program them with your coding, which we're going to hear a little bit about next month, but, I know, it's kind of like, I'm like, what?
When we were talking to the printer, I was, I was seeing something, oh, she made a 3D...
I remember it was like...
On...
That's what I thought too, I'm like, well, what makes it? And he goes, well, this, I'm like, well, what do you mean this? That's not anything. So, pretty cool. Anyway, if anyone would be interested.
See these?
Seeing that?
That's pretty good stuff.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, that's actually usable.
Yeah.
Right application.
So it doesn't like to let them just make little like icons and trinkets, you know, it has to, it'd be a huge... Same person. That was Karen. So this is, um, this enrollment, we did, uh, jump up in the elementary, or excuse me, K-12, CBA, has dropped some, which was usually typical for the first semester, we expect it to pick up again a little bit. We're not entirely worried about CBA, we've done it at thirty-five, so it's not much higher, but we're holding okay. Can't go like Alan was saying, they funded us at seventies, and I know it's jumped back up after the count eight. So as typical, um, budget status is what that says up there, it's hard to read that code. We started September with one million and fifty-two thousand, twenty-sixty-two. We ended October, one million, one thirty-eight, eight million, four. You asked last month about reserves, and at that point, it was at a hundred thousand, but the books weren't fully closed yet. So after closing the books, there was sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine in reserves. And they're restricted, or carryover, excuse me, it's restricted revenue in the sense that, you know, you don't take youth camp, carry it over and spend it on general fund, you don't take title and lap. They, they're restricted to those categorical programs, youth camp ended up around thirty, thirty thousand reserves. Scroll down, actually, it was the next page I wanted to show you. I just added, like I said last month, a few extra things over to Mark to kind of explain what those monies are. If you go over to the right side, we had two months in the books, so if everything was perfect, all these would be, you know, at seventeen percent. But what you have to remember is, for example, taxes don't all flow in proportionately every month. You know, you get your tax bill, typically it's paid, and then it goes in, in, um, love sum over the course of the year. Also, where it says, um, local grants, tuition, you know, we don't ever expect those to be right on target because we don't always get grants, even though we build capacity to have grants, they don't just, you know, fall in at a thousand dollars a month or things like that, so. Overall, doing well, if you can do it here ahead at the bottom. And again, just to keep in mind that these are the numbers we budgeted, K-12 at two hundred and sixty students, we're at three hundred and four. These are going to have to use right now, so that's going to have a bigger split in January for the upside. CBA is about right on budget, and camp actually has a lot more kids than we're expecting, so. Um, a couple of things, practice field looking nice. Randy's not here, but I just want to say for the record, we put a lot of time and effort into that field. I mean, it took a lot of work, like I said before, when we dug in there, picked up a bunch of rocks, there was chunks of asphalt. It's always been hard, and I can probably explain why, but when we dug in there to put in that heating system, all that stuff came to the surface. We were worried about this last rain because it did a number on it before, but it's holding very well, it looks nice, rich. It's going to be, it'll be good, so I just want to say that that project is, is done, all it's going to be now is mowed and, thank Randy for his efforts. Facilities committee, we had our first major planning meeting last month. Janet Hunter's in, and we'll meet up here again on the seventh. So by then, we should have a good four hours into it. I'm hoping to bring something in January or probably February, kind of a prioritized list from the facilities committee. And at that point, um, I believe they're going to want me to be asking the board for some kind of approval or direction. Not positive yet, but at least it will be a report out on what we've been doing so far, and what the group sees as the priorities. I'm not a voting member, but I'm there to answer questions like, how much have you spent on this or that or... Randy Cage up there, I don't know if you've, I mean, it's been there for a while, maybe you haven't noticed, but it's pretty much fully complete out at the lion's park, it's sealed off to the weather. There are a few things... There are a few things that need to be finished. We need lights, some outdoor lighting, inside lights, outdoor lighting, gutters, and we'd like to get some shelving in there. Obviously, we need some dent. It's about the volume here. And some boards around the log, we should kind of trim everything up. The, the whole batting cage to this point, the whole project has been done by volunteers. I think Randy might have been on the board at the time when that started. I mean, sure, Robert is coming on. It's been about a year and a half. Randy Lindstrom, Chris Dorman, Kevin Brown, Paul, the whole Lindstrom family, um, it's been a pretty big effort. At this point, I'm really asking for the green light from the district to go ahead and finish it off. We're at the point now where we're gonna start to get, you know, bids, and I just don't think that's something we, you know, want our volunteers to have to deal with, and, you know, we really have, as far as the district goes, spent about five hundred dollars on the project for adorable. So if, you know, their commitment was, they would get it, build it. So I mean, if there aren't, we're major concerned about that, I'd like to just pay to get it done. We estimate it could cost maybe ten thousand, Randy, ten year, everybody, you know, a lot of work out there. So, you know, it's part of his normal day, but, um, we're concerned about that, we're real close to, you know, wrapping it up, so.
Now, if we go over ten thousand, you can go to this.
Well, not in any long time, like, I mean, yeah. I mean, I would say not in this case, because the ten thousand is usually on a single item, like for eight, you know. Like, we did the field, we had approval because the sand was gonna be fourteen thousand, they're virtually. I know any one of those, you know, lighting's not going to be, you know, better, you know, so.
Does the utility have any conservation type measures going on currently where they supply lighting? I know they have in the past.
There's something with fluorescents, or, uh, not LEDs.
LEDs?
Yeah. Randy has talked to somebody there, but I don't know the outcome of that conversation, but that's what he's been looking at. They are more expensive upfront, but, yeah.
They'll last quite a few years or so.
It's probably a lot better in the long run. I don't think we need approval unless there's a specific thing, you know, at that amount, because, I mean. I mean, it's not an action item, but I guess, what, I just want some affirmation, yeah, go ahead, you're not gonna be in trouble. Because, you know, we did originally, the conversation stamped around that these volunteers were going to finish this project with the Booster Club and the Mitch Alcoa Memorial. So I guess the definition is, what's finished? I mean, they built the entire building, sealed it off, did everything. I would like to see the district take care of their assets. Seems fair and reasonable to me. I mean, it was very, uh, Jay Purman had her fifty or sixty thousand dollar building for maybe ten thousand.
That's great asset.
And we have a ton of kids in youth baseball. And, you know, you kind of have the girls that kind of use this as their primary, so equal opportunity. Well, unless I'm here otherwise, we're wrapped up. Um, just a reminder, next board meeting is scheduled for Grace River. And I won't send out any more things, but we got December, August, and I'm forgetting the other month right now, March, I wanna say.
And we're meeting in Gray before the?
It's at the Grace Rivers Fire Hall, a brand new one there.
It'll be either, uh, April, September.
Old Appleos, so I'm gonna go up there in December.
So what happens if silver flies? Babies are all by themselves.
Yeah. That'd be weird, because you have to have a twenty-four hour, you know, posting of changes.
Here's the answer right here. Remember that?
I guess, I won't spend over ten thousand. I guess they do. Uh, just wanted to remind community, I guess, you folks, to mostly draw the last, that, uh, myself and the board are at the water pumpers in Bellevue coming up next few weeks, if I can. Just kind of announce that for the record. Uh, some, Amy was here, um, Nicola and Noah was here, maybe somebody you were and didn't see, but, um, we had a great Veterans Day this past week, a nice assembly, excellent turnout. In fact, I think we have more veterans probably than we had any other time. Um, I know we were cramming, grabbing chairs, and it's always a really nice event. Stick around afterwards, have coffee, tell their stories, and they're always so grateful. I mean, they're, you know, proud of the event, but they're proud that we honored the event. They're proud of the school, I mean, it was just a really good, um, good feel-good afternoon. These aren't pictures from that event, but they are from previous events. Uh, you can see over in the bar right there, it was Bill Warren.
By the way, he's in the hospital.
Is he?
Yeah.
I can't see everyone from here, but I think that Bobber, this is, uh, sorry, there's makeup for beard. I had to take a double take at that one. That's you, Nick.
Who is it?
Um, no, I can't see that. I think Lyle was over there. Give, you know, too much flair on that one.
Well, they had some really good arguments, they had some really nice things to say.
Yeah. So that was, it's just always a really good time for us. Okay, one here, um, both boys have girls' football hands, volleyball district champs. Um, the boys didn't really have a championship playoff per se, because they were, you know, they, their place, they put them as district champs. And, um, both teams had first round states, so, you know, we've, there's been discussion, one B, should we have gone one B to two B? But, you know, since we have, I think we've won the state, you know, we've tripped there in football. This school last year, volleyball also went last year, track kids came home, they were better than us.
Softball.
Softball was there actually, yeah, it was there, I should know that. I know, it's, it's like, you know, when you see it, anybody who's ever listened to it. Anyway, enjoying the ride, great kids. I was going to talk about Bob, and I will a little bit anyway. There's a couple things Bob has done to help us out. Um, we often call on him when we get stuck in a jam, and he's come to help us anyway. And we still haven't seen any bills for it, I don't know if we have a bill, but. Just a couple highlights of Bob's graduation, the full board chair, um, helps hand out diplomas, and you can see on the top left and right. In the middle there, Bob came up twice and brought that huge machine, it's a big Volvo grader. I mean, it's, I had a video of, uh, he ran that back and forth on the field, I mean, in no time at all. So that was really appreciative, because that would, it just made such quick work of that project. Uh, the one below was when the truck went out up the baseball field, the youth field, the Okies, to dump some sand, told probably wasn't gonna make it, oh, no, no, this'll work, and sunk there and stuck there for several hours. So we can get a truck over there, pull it out, and that was Bob again. And so, um, he's been there for us. And then that is a picture of the field by another house of Bob, related to some of my cousins. So basically, that was the old XR seventy, Honda XR seventy-five. I thought I'd get a kick out of that one, let's see. No, you can see it, and we have a plaque for it, and, maybe you'll get this someday, I don't know. But, yeah, just, you know, thanking him, he's done a couple stints on the board, and he's served as board chair many years. It's not easy being the board chair, you know, and kind of the key sentence here is a little bit longer than that, but it says, anyone can leave when the seasons are calm. Bob, you know, had to leave through some difficult times, and, you know, I didn't want him to go without being a compliment for that, so. Here's the plaque, Jim Moten makes seats in his shop down at the youth camp, and he put together several of these, so he does a really good job, takes a lot of pride in it. I think it's a pretty awesome looking plaque.
He can make this on 3D printer?
I know, he was born one out of dental floss.
Are you planning on inviting Bob to the, to the September meeting? He's still a?
I don't know. Maybe, maybe, about it, because he won't be on the board then, but we'd like to, you know, get him back here, you know. Yeah, I thought you'd get him for evaluation thing.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I care, but.
No, we can, I mean, just to present.
Yeah, I told him he better show up, so it's probably, okay? Yes, that's it.
All right, well, we are down to our last item, which is super tense evaluation. We got a minute to discuss this. Do you, do you want to, like, do you want to discuss?
I would like it, but I have to reference.
One thing to be sure, for instance, because it's a process, if you can call it that. And, you know, I think usually the way we do this is the board members going first and have a discussion, and Lisa coming in on the ground.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's see, how long should we do this?
About fifteen minutes?
Well, we're probably, the way I read it, we're gonna need Lisa pretty pronto to talk about anything. Because most of the stuff, as I see it, is feedback from Lisa. Okay? Okay, yeah, I'm ready. Especially, I have to say that. Fifteen minutes. Okay, pre, pre this, you know, prior knowledge of, 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 so. So, if you round that, because we're gonna grab cookies and stuff on the way, so if you round out at seven thirty? Be back at seven thirty?
If you forget, we'll, we'll know.
Okay. And Nick, your final.
Did you think you had some, uh, printed headshots or?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I've got it on my computer, Ben. You kind of track us when you scan it, when you turn it, it goes upside down.
Spirit, just right.
I know.
Yeah?
Yeah, that's right, it's him. We remember. Didn't happen, but he was probably, that's for a benefit.
Oh, they can't get in there.
I don't know how many.
Seven, right? That's all I have. So, yeah, so it's, it's pretty good. Robert actually was going yesterday.
Yeah, Robert was gonna get it, I'm gonna try him, yeah.
But, yeah.
So, do you think it's pretty?
Yeah, it's been, nasty. Not even good weather for fish, I know those, we have so many dogs, Alan. But if they have thirty, count of thirty-four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, thirty-four, just between the next one, saw it.
Yeah, that's not a very big stretch.
No, just hundreds of them there this year.
Let's see, do we have, uh, do we need, do we need, or? Anything under board member reports? The only thing left is a chairman, so entertain motion.
I move the board adjourn.
It's been moved to second, and the board adjourn, all the members say, all right?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
More discussion.
No, you can't, you want to discuss the chairman.
You don't?
No. It is open.